I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, for whose stand it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Right, please. Lord, we're just ever so thankful that as proud citizens, we were selected to to lead the community in the decisions that need to be made and the benefit of those that are our residents. We just ask that your that your wisdom and our decision making would be upon us and that you help us to represent those who have elected us into office, for us, these these.
All right. I guess we'll thoroughly have a chance to look the agenda over.
We had an item G two.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion, your second. Okay, motion and second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. All right, well, as citizens, if anyone would like to address the council, you can approach the bench, state your name, three minutes. Now let's get this forward, we'll close citizens' comments. Okay, I don't believe we have any appointments and pro confirmations.
Yep.
So we'll move on to the consent agenda. Does everyone have a chance to look at the consent agenda?
I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries.
I'm our mayor and city council. Item G one, so you've seen this before, but I'll do a quick recap. As the city of Goddard grows, the demand has put on its water sewer structure increases. This demand results in new costs associated with maintenance, construction, and management of sea sewer and water system. On October fourth, 2021, the city council reviewed a draft designed to offset the long-term cost of city infrastructure for both water and sewer. This proposal was later reviewed on March seventh, 2022, of city council. The follow-up review was presented to city council October third, 2022, noting it would have to be first reviewed by the planning commission before formal ordinance could be adopted. The planning commission approved the changes to Article twelve, one thirty-two, and subdivision regulations on October tenth, 2022, following a public notice publication in the city newspaper allowing twenty days to lapse per state law. The ordinance is being presented today for final adoption. So you've seen these images before, but just kind of as a recap, and a lot of questions came up during planning commission, so feel free to ask any now, if there's any concerns or thoughts or questions about any of it. But basically what it does, what this infrastructure benefit fee does, is you have development one over here with accommodating infrastructure. Development two is going to be coming down the road, and we know that the city of Goddard is growing, and so the idea would be to oversize the infrastructure for the potential for future developments. That way, the cost is not borne completely by development one, and development two doesn't get a free ride for this linear infrastructure that would be accommodating in the future. And so what we've determined, and what council has determined and approved in the past, is the whole idea would be this oversizing cost would be determined by the city engineer. It would be tailored for each development and assessed to the next development down the road, which would be development two. And what that would look like is the cost would be at large, which would be carried through the capital improvement program until such time as the cost can be assessed to the new development district, which would be the improvement district with development two. So that oversizing cost will be carried by the city and then applied to development two down the road in terms of specials, just like you would typically see. So just to recap some of that, the assessment would be with specials to the future development, lots for oversizing infrastructure. A city will carry the cost difference at large through the CIP or such cost funding as determined by the city treasurer and the city administrator until such time as it can be assessed to future developments. Strategy for oversizing infrastructure for future growth, it's basically, and this is kind of what was determined, what the planning commission was asking, is that is this going to impact existing residents on the Waterville or Sewerville? No, this cost is carried by the city, but it doesn't mean that we're going to be throwing it on existing residents, it's just carried by the city through existing fund balances that we would have, as to be determined, like I said, by the city treasurer or city administrator. And then when the new developer comes online, we put it on as specials. And so what's interesting about this is that it's kind of like an investment in the future, because if you put a million dollars in now, and then assess those specials down the road, according to our attorneys, that that cost with the interest is what we'd be assessing to the next development. But that cost in the future, when development two does come down the road, could be 1.5 million. So the whole idea is that we are actually saving the development number two money, and we're saving the city money, because that way we don't have to take the bond issuance down the road at a higher cost for that linear infrastructure, we're doing it now. And so it kind of locks those specials in time for now, then when development two comes along, we charge it to them. This is not something we collect upfront, there are some questions about that as well. That was the equity fee, the equity fee we collect upfront with building permits, we've actually started collecting that now. This will be special assessment, so it'll come through people's escrow, just like any other special assessment would be. And like I said, it does not require the developer to carry the upfront oversizing cost. This is basically a plan for recouping the cost through specials on future developments, and no cost will be passed on existing residents in the form of decreased water rates or bills. And so that was a concern by one of the planning commissioners, I just wanted to reiterate that, it's not going to be levied against existing residents. Financially, it was small publication cost, legally, it's approved as a form. It is recommended to city council, both one, waive the reading of the ordinance with a voice, and in two, approve the ordinance to amend the subdivision regulations for Article twelve, one thirty-two, to include the infrastructure benefit fee guidelines of a voice in a roll call. This time, I entertain any questions or thoughts or concerns on it.
Do you have any questions on that? You have to make a motion to waive the reading.
I will make a motion to waive the reading of the ordinance.
Second.
Motion to second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. You're going to take a motion to approve the ordinance.
I make a motion to approve the ordinance. Subdivision regulations, Article twelve, point one thirty-two.
Second.
Motion to second. Any other discussions? Roll call.
Councilmember Leeland?
Yes.
Councilmembers Arman?
Yes.
Councilmember Trailer?
Yes.
Councilmember Proctor?
Yes.
The ordinance number nine oh four.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Good evening, mayor and council, thank you for having me here this evening. As you know, the 2022 Goddard Fall Festival is this weekend, Friday, October the twenty-first through Sunday, the twenty-third, and this year, our premier sponsor is Mel Hamilton Ford. And activities on Friday include food trucks, the Goddard Chamber and Goddard Central Wine and Spirits Beer Garden before and after the Goddard versus Heisenhower football game, as well as a concert on the main stage with the ninety-nine beginning at eight P M. Saturday activities include vendors, parade, food trucks, bands on the main stage all day beginning at twelve thirty, the beer garden, a scavenger hunt, Kids Corner, rides and inflatables, and concluding with headliner bands, lone jets, K T V C and fireworks. Sunday, we will start the day bright and early with a hot air balloon launch, and then have lunch in the park with food trucks and a fun story walk with the Goddard Public Library. As I reported back in February, there will not be a traveling carnival in Goddard this year due to changes in Kansas. However, we are bringing in rides and inflatables. The festival committee has found a few companies that actually own carnival rides, and they bring them in, and so we will be doing that. We will have seven inflatable, two are considered inflatable rides, like the mechanical bull and another one that's called the wrecking ball, and then ten other rides, including the forty-foot zip line, a rock climbing wall, Euro bungee, and some of your classic carnival rides, swings, a pirate ship, and a couple of others. So there's many new things this year, including the nonprofit showcase, which will take place Saturday in Linear Park. This is basically for nonprofits, they will be designated in one area in Linear Park, and they'll have a chance to present their services on stage during the festival. So this is a great way for community to learn about what services are available to them. We'll also be having a scavenger hunt, and anybody can pick up a scavenger hunt card from the information booth on Saturday. They complete the card by visiting the vendors and nonprofits with the hints on the cards, and a winner will receive a prize value at a hundred dollars. And then a hot air balloon launch, as I mentioned, Sunday morning at sunrise, they will take off from Discovery Fields first thing in the morning. And then the Goddard Public Library Story Walk, beginning at Sunday at eleven A M. Families are invited to come to Linear Park, have lunch with the food trucks, and take a walk around the park while reading the story Fletcher and the Falling Leaves. As you found out last, the last meeting, we will be having fireworks, because you approved it. After the final band on Saturday, we will have a great show by Victory Card Techniques. And we also have merchandise this year for sale, so I will kind of show you that. We have decals and buttons, these are just souvenir items, they are not required to attend, but we are selling them to help just kind of fund some of the expenses of the festival. We also have T-shirts, so you have your 2022 T-shirt here. And these are available online now, but they will also be available at the information booth during the festival. We also have wristbands for sale now, if you don't want to wait in line during the festival, you want to get your wristband in advance, we have those as well. Some of the favorites will be back this year is cordon bleu, but we will do it two days, so there'll be one tournament Friday night, which is a blind draw, so you go and you don't know who your partner is, and pair up with some of you probably don't know. And Saturday, it's Bring Your Own Partner, and Bagging for Veterans will be back to run both of those tournaments. And part of that money for bagging and veterans, I'm not sure if you're familiar with it, but they do, some of the entry fee goes back to help support local veterans and honor flights, so. Parade again at ten o'clock on Sunday, or Saturday. Mrs. Cole's Tropical Snow, Kids Corner will be back with relay races, a duck pond, soldering toss, and lots of prizes for the kiddos. The Lions Club Kitchen, Bingo, and the Famous Train. The Goddard Church Kitchen will also be open. The Holy Spirit Altar Society Petting Zoo, the Adventure Sports Shuttle, sponsored by Orshelin Farm and Home, and I mentioned the beer garden. And this year, we are partnering with Goddard Central Wine and Spirits and Budweiser. To expand that, we will be offering four types of draft beer, as well as card seltzers. We have almost one hundred food trucks, businesses, and nonprofit and craft vendors, that is a record high for this festival. Last year, we had seventy-four, which was approaching the record, I believe it was eighty-two was the highest number, so this year, we are sitting at just about a hundred, and they keep coming in, so we may go over a hundred by the time Friday is here. And as you can see, there's a full weekend of activities. I just want to mention all of our sponsors, because none of this would be possible without them, obviously, the support of the city, Mel Hamilton Ford, Pathway Church, Postnet, Mayor's Specialty Services, Mrs. Cole's Tropical Snow, Relevant Audio, the ninety-nine, Orshelin Farm and Home, Empress Bank, Credit Union of America, Legacy Bank, First National Bank, Adventure Sports, the Goddard Lions Club, Revival Dance Academy, the Goddard Chamber, Ace Hardware, Jay Russell Communities, Bagging for Veterans, Goddard Vet Clinic, and Goddard Central Wine and Spirits. So as you can see, many businesses in our community have stepped up this year to help make this festival possible, so we definitely want to thank them, thank the city council and the city for all their support, I know Public Works guys, Thatcher, police department have all been involved in helping this actually happen, so we just appreciate all that. I hope all of you will be able to join us for a fun weekend, and I am happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do you have any questions?
Oh, I don't.
Okay.
Thank you.
I hope to see you all on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good evening. Good morning, mayor and council, and I'll turn this over to Ryan for additional comments. As you know, Mr. Kelsey had approached the city about a hundred and thirty-one and a half acres located at one sixty-seventh and twenty-third street. The council adopted a finding of facts at the October third meeting for that island annexation for a portion of that acreage, as the remaining portions within the existing city limits. That area is served by Rural Water District number four. Residential housing is beyond the scope and intent of Rural Water Districts. The proposed agreement is similar in form and structure to that of the city of Wichita and Rural Water number four's agreements. The agreement's been authored, negotiated by city attorney Ryan Peck, Rural Water District number four's legal counsel, and Mr. Kelsey through consultation with bond counsel Kevin Cowan and myself. And these are the three parcels in question, with the two up top being in the existing city limits, and this seventy-acre parcel below being the subject of the island annexation. You can notice some blues and greens, the blues are existing water lines, the orange would be city boundaries, and the greens would be sanitary sewer. The agreement's for five hundred dollars an acre, for a total compensation of roughly sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and fifteen dollars. Rural Water Four releases the service of the territory to the city of Goddard. Payment is to be made no later than thirty days following completion of a phase, the developer will pay Rural Water a prorata amount for the phase, and the remaining balance, if any, should be paid no later than ten years from the effective date of the agreement. There's no direct cost associated with this, however, anytime you're talking about specials or leveraging debt, there is the general obligation portion that the city could be obligated on, as well as if it's recouped through a CID, and that's in accordance with twelve dash six A oh one at SEC, which is the property owner petition statutes for financing those improvements through the special assessment process. And again, it's been authored by city attorney Ryan Peck, and I'll turn it over to Ryan now for additional comments.
Rural Water has already presented this to their board, they've reviewed it, well, they haven't formally approved it, they've indicated that they're fine with the substance and form of the agreement. It's my understanding that Mr. Kelsey has also looked at it, he's fine with it, so this is just a first step in getting this thing finalized to have you guys vote and formally approve the agreement. And then we'll forward it back to Rural Water for them to formally approve it, and then for Mr. Kelsey to sign it. So, and, you know, as Brian indicated, ultimately, it's the developer who's responsible for the acquisition of these water rights. If he so chooses, he has asked the city to advance those monies, but only to the extent that we're able to assess that against the properties and those expenses, so.
I guess the good question I have is that they have to get those water rights agreement before they petition to come into the city, I suppose, aren't they?
Well, the annexation petition has already been submitted to the county for approval, and so that process is already going on. I mean, you can be a part of the city without necessarily being on city water, because two of the three parcels are within city limits, but are within the Rural Water District's territory as well.
It's staff's recommendation that you authorize the mayor to execute the agreement with Rural Water Four, Mr. Paul Kelsey to serve the hundred and thirty-one, point four three acres of Rural Water District number four's service territory, and that can be done with a voice vote.
Take a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Your second?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Close.
Honorable mayor and council, pardon me. Item H two is splash pad manifold. This item was originally presented to you all on, at the August first, twenty twenty meeting. You council directed staff to inquire about a stainless steel alternative to the quoted PVC manifold. Athco, the manufacturer, this does not produce a stainless manifold. They reached out to all their vendors, and they don't make them. We talked to the two fiber, people that could make them that we have locally here, and they stated they didn't want to make, attempt to make them, because stainless steel's hard, it's difficult to drill, it's difficult to weld and whatnot without specialized material equipment. And so we weren't able to find one. We wondered why the Athco folks didn't make one, and after talking with some other public work staff, went up with it, and it might just be the sheer weight of the metal when they get it together, and then it gets filled with water, it's a lot heavier than a PVC. And that's the only reason we can think of it. But that manifold pumps water to various parts of the splash pad, as we stated before. The recommend replacing the part with a new part, and then we'll take the repaired part and put it in storage in case we have a blowout, and we can swap it with that one and wait for a new one in the future. Everything's the same, you know, the splash pad has important traction. Without this manifold, it can place out of commission for weeks. We're requesting spending approval of ten thousand, seven hundred and eighty for the PVC manifold. Hundred percent of the funding will come from the area's special parks and rec fund, capital outlays sixty-three, twenty, eighty-six hundred. Nothing was legal. Any questions, additional questions? As I say, we'll keep the current one, it's leaking, but if the new one were to blowout, and we're waiting for one in an emergency in December, we could cobble it together, I'm sure. So, better than nothing.
We're going to have it back together for next year, right?
We will definitely have it going by spring. If nothing else, just recommend the city council approve the purchase of a new splash pad manifold for ten thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the purchase of the new splash pad manifold for ten thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars.
Motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion for a second, any discussion? All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Item H three is linear storm shelter rehabilitation. In 2012, the city council showed interest in providing a public storm shelter for residents in case of a catastrophic event within the city limits. At the June eighteen, twenty twenty-two council meeting, the council approved the construction of a linear park storm shelter for the cost of just over eighty-four thousand dollars. Shelter is built to FEMA storm standards and allows safe occupancy of up to eighty-six people. And in the decade following construction, the shelter has become a safe place for residents to gather during a storm, as well as a popular park feature used for sledding, and just kids love running up and down, and you've seen it, they have a lot of fun on that. Well, between the weather and the foot traffic, it's degraded the grass and the dirt on top of the structure, and the grass is dead, the concrete's showing, it doesn't look good, and it's not as safe as it once was. Here's a photograph of the top, you can see where that dirt's, you know, eroded away, the grass has died. So what we're wanting to do is, we're going to pull this basket, and we'll have quite a bit of dirt brought in, and we're going to build this up, and we're going to build it out a little further, so it slopes out just a little farther on both sides. And there is our irrigation here, we'll raise those heads up, add additional heads along the top, lay sod, and basically just rehab it, thicker dirt, nice sod, more irrigation, keep it looking nice. While, if it's approved, while the construction is underway and the sod is new, we will put a temporary fencing around it to keep little feet off of it until it digests. Another photo there from the south end. Oh, and another thing would be painting these. But to address the deteriorating condition, staff's proposing, as I said, a rehabilitation of dirt and sod to cover it, covering the shelter, run out a lot of material to it, increase the depth, upgrade the irrigation system. Once that's all done, public work staff will clean and repaint the wing walls. And so it'll be a pretty total rehab of the outside of that, it'll look a lot nicer. Staff solicited and received bids from several companies, I asked for bids submitted separately for the dirt and the dirt portion separate from the sod and irrigation portion. Our best betters for dirt, for the dirt portion was Noaw Construction, local company, they always do a great job for us, and we like doing business with them, so we're really happy to see they brought a good bid. And then sod and irrigation, cantral cutting was the best bid on that. The paint for the end caps will come from Integrity Coatings, and as I said, we will paint that. Total cost as bid is sixteen thousand, five hundred. Thatcher and I have discussed this a lot, and we've decided, I've decided, to put in a four thousand dollar contingency in the event that we need more dirt than everyone has. has calculated on that. I calculated quite a bit of dirt, and so did they. We don't know that we'll need it, but we, once the dirt's going, it's better be, better safe than sorry once the project's underway because we've got to get the sod down before it freezes. So staff is requesting a spending approval of twenty thousand five hundred dollars to rehabilitate the storm shelter in linear park. Hundred percent of the funding will come from the capital improvement fund, Parks and Rec, ninety-three, twenty, eighty-six hundred. No legal issues on this one. Any questions?
No, when we look at the background, it looks as though we did it in twenty twenty-two instead of when it was actually constructed. How long ago was that? How long ago did we build that?
I think you put twenty twelve.
Twenty twelve is what I had in my records.
Twenty twenty.
It says twenty twenty-two on there.
Yeah, it's twenty twelve.
That was an excerpt in the agenda report that had the minutes from that meeting when it was, when it was, the motion was made and it was voted on.
Well, what I read, it almost sounded like we just, just now decided to build it.
No, I mean, maybe they have worded it was, was bad, so maybe I need to work on my grammar. Any additional questions?
Yeah. Matt, you have enough money for it?
Yeah, we've been talking about doing this for a couple of years. I don't know necessarily that we'll use capital improvement fund funds for it. I told him to put capital. Capital funds are sunk in. It'll either come out of capital improvement fund or come out of...
Okay, did I put the wrong fund?
No, you're, you're right. I was gonna explain this.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So it'll either come out of capital improvement fund or it'll come out of Parks and Rec Reserve Fund, which is where we put funds for capital improvements in the parks. It's just, I know we've, I know we've committed a lot of that already this year, so I didn't want to commit to that fund yet because we still haven't paid for the park benches and shade structures. And there's something else, too, that we've already approved for the park that I can't think of off the top of my head, but we only have a certain amount of budget authority in that fund. So basically, whatever's, after those are made, we'll, it'll either be a split between Parks and Rec Fund and Capital Improvement Fund or it'll be a capital improvement fund. So, but we will not be using any regular operating revenue for it out of our reserves.
Okay, sounds good.
I'll make a motion to approve the spending authority for twenty thousand five hundred to rehab the linear park storm shelter.
Second.
Motion, a second. Any other discussion? One favor, aye?
Aye.
Vote.
Thank you, counsel. Item H four is a water tower maintenance agreement. City's water tower is a vital part of our water infrastructure. It provides 500,000 gallons of storage and pressurizes the distribution system. To ensure the tower meets all city and the water coming from the tower meets all city, KDAHA, EPA quality standards and guidelines, we must adhere to a strict maintenance and inspection schedule. Maintenance items include regular internal and external inspections, cleaning the interior and exterior, and painting the interior and exterior. The tower was last cleaned and painted in twenty eighteen at a cost of one hundred twenty-seven thousand six thirty-five. The maintenance is vital to provide a safe water community and includes regular inspections and cleanings and painting. The cost of the various maintenance services can be substantial and have an impact on your annual budget if we budget it, you know, all at one time. To make that maintenance easier to budget and plan, we requested a multi-year tower maintenance plan from Maguire Iron. The plan addresses all required cleanings, inspections, and internal and external painting of the tower over a ten-year period. We have a good working history with Maguire Iron. They've always provided quality maintenance, repair and painting services to the city, so we're very confident in their work. This is a breakdown of the ten-year agreement. As you'll see, it starts out at twenty-one thousand five hundred a year and increases four percent a year over that ten years, a total cost of two fifty-eight, one thirty-one. It, for year one, it includes a clean out, a remote operated vehicle inspection, and any steelwork repairs. Year two will be a visual inspection inside and out. Three, we get another clean, a clean out, the fresh, the exterior fresh wash and paint, and an interior clean out inspections on and down the line. It includes all the clean outs, all the inspections, two paintings, and steelwork for quite a good price. It makes it a lot easier to budget because we can, we know what we're getting in the way for the next two years.
Does our ground tank fit in this somewhere, too?
I'm sorry?
That ground tank that we have, does that fit?
No, they, that doesn't fit into this. We, a different company does that for us for the most part. It was inspected last year, and they cleaned, they emptied it out, cleaned it all out, and inspected it. It's good. The next inspection on that, when we clean it out, we will have to reiterate the cathodic protection, which is a, and Harlan can probably explain cathodic protection a little better than I can, but it's kind of like, it's hard, it's hard to explain. They wear away over the years. It's, how, how late?
It just, it provides a sacrificial anode so that instead of rusting the metal on the tank, it rusts this anode, and then it has to just be replaced. Just because of electrical currents, the positives, corrosion is what it tries to, tries to direct all the corro, yeah, tries to direct all the corrosions to this sacrificial anode as opposed to being the metal being corroded in the tank.
And they're, they're due for replacement. I knew the engineer could get better explanation than myself. They're corroding in the tank. So that will be addressed at the next, the next time we have to clean the tank, probably the next twenty-four months to thirty-six months. And when, when we go to clean that, or if the council were lying, I can seek out a maintenance, long-term maintenance agreement for that, too, if financing, everybody's good with it.
So aside from budgeting, is that a, is that a good deal?
I think it is. If we go back here, well, the entirety of this contract is more than, or less than we paid for painting and cleaning it last time.
Okay.
It's, it's, it is a good deal because it spreads it out, and you go a lot of services for a really fair price.
And ideally, we're keeping any small problems small rather than finding them when they're big and expensive.
Yeah, these regular inspections every year, they'll, if something happens, they'll catch it before it's expensive.
Work I was just reading here. It looks like the city can, can terminate this at any time.
Yes, yes, we can.
It doesn't say there's a penalty if you terminate it.
No, and that's no term, no penalty for terminating it. So we're...
So essentially, it's the twenty-one five with a four percent inflation every year?
Correct, yes. And, and City Attorney did, did review this, and we made one change. Did you, or was it Bob that reviewed this? I can't remember.
Probably Bob.
I think it was Bob reviewed this. We made one change. They had litigation in South Dakota, and that's all being red flag. He ran up. He said, change the litigation if there were to be any to Kansas law.
We chose Hawaii.
Hawaii. Yeah, I mean, I've sent the council and they've been Hawaii.
Very concerning.
Do you know, does that video, does that video expect, do we get a tape of that? Do we get a DVD of that?
We, they, they'll give one. We like one, yes. They always do every time. It's kind of standard to give us a DVD of what they see in the, in the tank when they send a remote operated vehicle through. So the, for this, this plant maintenance plan, we're requesting spending approval of twelve, two hundred fifty-eight thousand one thirty-one. That will be spent over a ten-year period, and that will be entered in a water tower maintenance plan with Maguire Iron. The amount will be budgeted annually to the utility fund, treatment and processing, repair, and maintenance utility infrastructure. As I said, legally, it was reviewed by Bob Quikendall and made one change. Other than that, it was good. Any additional questions?
Sounds like a good deal.
If none, then it is recommended that the city council group ten-year water tower maintenance plan in the amount of two fifty-eight, one thirty-one.
Do we have a motion to that effect?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion, a second. Any discussion? One favor, aye?
Aye.
Honorable Mayor and Counsel, you can see progress on the Star Bond. This is looking almost straight west with the childcare facility, the water park, the health club, the auditorium, and the hotel with the second-phase ballfields and parking, which is in final form. And the second left here should be forthcoming. You can see, looking back to the south southwest, second set of ballfields.
When will that road over to one ninety-ninth be connected?
We don't know yet. We still haven't got a site plan or a plat at this stage, but it's in, it's in the works. The latest numbers for our residential subdivisions here that are currently active, including the additions of Trails End, and there, as you can see, second addition, Arbor Creek. Arbor Creek, looking back to the northeast there with Phase One. And you can see there's some spec homes going into Phase Two with, looks like West Star working in the right-of-way there. There's two hundred and forty-five total lots with forty-seven sold. One thing we want to note is that we'll be coming forward at the next council meeting on November seventeenth with some petitions and authorization resolutions for that second addition. Here's a view of the pool house. Elk Ridge, more construction in that final phase. It's fully, fully built out. There's Clover Leaf with the third and final phase. Infrastructure completion, and now spec home foundations and footings underway. Just a phase map that we show with Phase One being the light gray, the darker gray Phase Two, and the tan being Phase Three. Rusty Creek, looking to the north. You can see the detention pond and the homes currently under construction for Phase One. Cedar Street Rehab from the twenty twenty-two street maintenance. You can see that's completed You may also see the Apaches utility cuts around town, too, have been completed as well. And there's the duplexes just further to the south here behind the tree row with Main Street at the top of the picture. Just a reminder that we have fall fest coming up on the twenty-first through the twenty-third. Looks like the weather's gonna cooperate, knock on wood. We'll have movie night on Thursday as school's out on Friday, so the kids don't have to worry about getting up and going to school if they're able to attend a movie on the park, which will be Adam's family, too. Some notable updates on previous agenda items. We've completed the, the sale of the nine hundred North Main Street land sale, which was behind Orshelons. That was two hundred and sixty-three thousand six hundred and seventy-nine dollars. That went into the capital improvement fund, and, and much the same below for the twenty-third and Pawnee Community Garden Area. Previous council discussions were to include a possible encumbrance for Parks Green Space Community Facilities expansion with no actions taken at that time. We also, that same week, closed on twenty-third and Pawnee. That was thirty thousand, less than fifteen thousand to the Southern Baptist Covenant for the release of those covenants. Again, that's going into the CIP, which is a one-time revenue in accordance with our fiscal policy so that we're not relying operational costs on a one-time revenue that goes into the CIP. Also, the island annexation for Mr. Kelsey's development at twenty-third and one sixty-seventh is going to the Sedgwick County Commissioners for their approval at their November second meeting. And so if approved, on November seventh, we'll be presenting an ordinance for annexation at that time. Other upcoming items, we'll have Q three reports, sale and purchase city-owned a lot on Walnut, which is tentative. The Star Bond plat is tentative. Improvement petitions and authorization resolutions for Big Arm and Arbor Creek second addition. That'll also include the engineering service agreements at that time as well. We'll have the growth discussions as well as potential unilateral and petitioned annexations to provide a buffer, as you know, Wichita's now across one sixty-seventh and Maple, and could be to one ninety-ninth at their leisure, at their choosing. And then we'll have some administrative code and council meeting daytime discussions at that time as well. And that concludes my report. If there are no questions for myself or the rest of the city team.
Forget the name of the development. The, when's the one happening over two fifteenth and Pawnee? Or when are they, do you have the break?
Trails End.
Trails End, yeah.
We're actually working on, on that right now. I know we're reviewing some final plans, and Harland may have a better update because he just received some information late today.
I think, I think they're gonna find and open the bids in mid-November. Didn't we set the date to November fifteenth, fifteenth, I think?
Cool.
So how big a chunk did Wichita take out of that?
Well, they're essentially from Maple to Central, just that little quarter section, half of it. So there's one small, less than thirty acres from all of the homes that are immediately north of us. They're north of Maple. You can see on the other side of the tree line there, those homes, they, like I said, they can essentially get to them with that one property coming in. And we wouldn't know until it was over.
They're directly north of that, of that mobile park there, Maple Village. They're directly north of that.
Maple Village and where the possum signs at.
It's like a half section.
Right. No, it's, it's, it's probably half of a quarter.
Yeah, it's kind of stagnant. There's still small slabs.
It's chopped up.
It's chopped up a little bit.
And then they also are all the way up one sixty-seventh to Central, and then immediately across Central, they're, they're, that quarter section as well, and they're currently working on a subdivision there. And, you know, we were in discussions with those developments, but Wichita having other suburbs that aren't Goddard and Mays buying their water, they're able to re-channel those revenues in for system expansions in their critically or strategically important areas and essentially provide utilities to those subdivisions for freight, essentially.
Yeah, I guess free is good, huh?
It is if you're the developer and you're getting it. It's not so good if you're Goddard.
Thank you, brother.
Thank you.
Just got any body comments? Sarah?
Um, it was recently asked the basketballs court slash chess board at Means Park if that was actually used a lot, and if it's not, could we turn it into a pickleball court? Or possibly see about putting in some pickleball courts somewhere at Means?
I know that, go ahead, bro.
Well, the, the city, or the school system, excuse me, if you notice, they tore down those eastern, half of those tennis courts. Now, talking to their maintenance people, there's some talk about the school putting in pickleball courts there.
Nice.
So I don't know if we want to duplicate that. So we may want to hold off and wait and see what they do.
Okay.
But there is some, some talk about putting some in town.
But we've also talked about some year doing a improvement project over there to do something about the basketball court. Talking about, you know, bringing in dirt to raise it up and put kind of...
And some stormwater improvements because, yeah, that's gonna be needed to do anything there.
Yeah, we've had a lot of discussion on that. We've got... Yeah, we've had a lot of discussion on that, we've got a game plan for putting some inlet sand and getting some of that water off there. Possibly even like massive raising every day. It's, I, I personally get embarrassed when it rains and people have to walk through water to get to our pool front door.
Because the basketball court's a bathtub.
Yeah, it's a bathtub and, and I, every time I go see that, I, I don't like it, so we've talked about a solution, we can make it happen.
Cool. That's all I have.
Brad, I'll let you go first this time.
No way. Well, I, well, anyway. I don't have, yeah, I better not. Enjoy the, the library ribbon cutting and then I made it to two ribbon cutting, right?
Yep.
And, and then, you know what the other one was? You hear me?
He just happened to get it.
I missed it, I was, I think I was out of town.
Oh, I went over the, last week, I went to the, if you guys ever heard of Harrison Park? DIY project? Huh? Harrison Park DIY project in Kansas City? So it's this, it's a skate park for skateboards. Can you see those? Those are total, total like, people has made the skate park. They turned a old cul-de-sac into this sweet skate park. It is a sweet skate park.
So it's kind of like a community garden but made by-
It's like a QB. Yeah, right. And dude, these skaters are like in their 50s, 55s, I felt like, yeah, you know?
Did you do something crazy?
No, I didn't break any arms or anything this time, but it was, it was kind of interesting. It might be kind of interesting, you know, DIY, North Park Skate Park, you know? Be thinking about that. All right, that's all I have to say.
Michael?
Oh, I'll give, well, even though Chief isn't here tonight, give a shout out to her, her boys in blue. I was working out at the Genesis and was leaving on Saturday morning and saw the tail end of the high-speed chase. Slammed the guy up against the side and kept him and threw him in and this was pretty exciting, so, but yeah. Stayin' safe.
You got excited by watching that?
I didn't get, I mean, it was, of course it's exciting. Rootin' for the good guys, you know?
Yeah.
Anyways. Uh, yeah, I'm excited for the Fall Festival, probably needs to work to pay off and everybody else is too, but that's it.
My thought is that it's good to see the Goddard Fall Festival growing and becoming more of an attraction to those around. Look forward to being part of it this year. That's really a fun one I got too, so I guess I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion for a second, any discussion? One favor, aye?
Aye.